Just speak to the microphone.
Speak to it, speak.
Betsy, can you hear me? We can't hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can't hear.
No, we can't hear her.
We cannot hear her.
We can hear you. No. I can hear it on my phone, that's why. You gonna call in with your phone? Okay.
That's...
Okay.
And what does this stand for?
That's telling me that...
Turn on the microphone.
Okay, Suton.
Yeah, I changed the... See, because we get the feedback.
Yep.
Suton, can we... Can you hear us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep. Yeah.
All right.
Betsy, can you hear us? We can't hear Betsy.
Suton, go ahead and talk again.
Test, test, one, two.
Thank you.
Betsy, you might have to go out and come back in again.
Is she even here? She's talking.
Yeah.
We can't hear you, Betsy. We can't hear you.
No, Betsy, try to exit out of the Zoom and re-log in.
Or just make sure your microphone is...
Okay, they're trying to tell you to...
Tell them to log out of the Zoom and log back in.
Hold on, hold on, Betsy, hold on.
Hey, Betsy, can you try to log out of the Zoom?
Yeah, I'll come in on this, so you...
Oh, yes, Betsy dialed one in on her phone, so it's just like real confirmation that she's... Yeah. Yeah, here it is.
Betsy, are you on on your phone?
Yeah.
No, she's not.
All right.
Betsy, we're just gonna call you.
I'll call the meeting to order. First item is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, stand one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as for all.
Does anyone have any suggested additions to the...
No. I'm sorry.
So I mute that for right now.
Okay, hold on, Betsy.
Just wave your hand when you wanna... When you wanna talk. And then we'll unmute you. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any suggestion, suggested additions to the agenda?
Uh, no.
Okay, seeing none. Are there any public comments? These would be for items not related to what's on the agenda. Anyone? Okay. In that case, we're ready for a presentation and public hearings. And we're going to be talking about the climate action projects that have been proposed.
Okay.
Amy, do you want to lead us in this?
Sure, I thought maybe the easiest thing to do... There are 82 items on this list. And Betsy wants us to go through and rank them as regional, municipal, or other. And then we'll share this back with Pam Adams at the COG as well. But I thought what we could do is... I have the blank spreadsheet here, so when we get consensus, I'll make a note. And then I can get everything together. And then next week at your meeting, you're gonna talk about the capital improvement program. So if there are any items that we note as municipal, I'll bring those next week to the agenda or to the meeting, so that you can discuss if that's something we want to flesh out more for a capital improvement program, if that works.
Work. Thank you.
Yep. So the first item is under energy and buildings. Promote programs, provide tools, and encourage commercial building owners to track, audit, perform preventative maintenance, and re-commission buildings. So what do we feel on this one?
Regional.
I'd put both, but regional is fine.
Elliot?
I don't feel one way or the other on it.
Suton?
Regional.
Regional. Betsy, do you agree? Oh, unmuted.
Regional.
Regional. Okay, we'll put regional for that one. Okay, next.
Exceed me one, are we using the 36, the shorter list, or...
We're gonna go through the whole 82.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay, second one. Promote programs, provide tools, and encourage residential building owners to track, audit, and perform preventative maintenance.
Regional.
I had put regional, municipal, and federal, but I can go with regional.
Suton?
Regional.
Betsy?
Betsy.
Regional?
Regional.
Elliot?
Elliot.
I suggested not doing this, because we need to decide whether we're going to force people to do this, or that we're going to encourage people to do this. Before we even decide if we're gonna do it.
Betsy has something to say.
I'm just hearing, asking back.
Betsy, we're getting a lot of feedback. So can you call us in from... Just from your phone?
So you have to dial the 929-205-6099 number.
And leave the Zoom meeting on your iPad or your computer. What's the number I'll text it to?
No, we're still on EB1, is that correct?
EB2.
EB2.
If I called her on my...
205.
Back on my phone and put her on speaker, would that be okay?
That's what we were trying to do. I gave her the number to call into the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then she has to use this meeting ID number.
One other comment on EB1. The reason opposed to it is because I don't want to encourage building owners to do a particular thing if we don't have any idea what it's going to cost them, what the return on investment will be, and things like that. And we can discuss those, and I think that should be discussed before we say, well, we're just going to encourage them to do this.
Yeah.
Who's in the best position to provide that kind of data? It wouldn't be the municipalities. To me, it would have to be
Regional.
A regional organization.
Yeah.
Maybe the planning office, COG planning office, for instance. Or maybe even a state agency, so...
Or there have been studies on this being done. And for it to help people make decisions about this, those experts could be the ones to help us. Probably people at the university work with this kind of stuff every day.
Yeah. But Elliot, I think the wording using promote and encourage is not... Is vague enough in the sense of it, we're not mandating or requiring anything.
Right.
And part of the promoting and encouragement would be to offer this information and data that we're talking about, and studies have already been done, about potential costs to the developers.
That may be right. I think it sounds like if we say that we're going to provide the information that could help them make this decision.
So you're suggesting a change in the wording?
Yeah, let's say, where we say promote programs, provide tools, and encourage commercial building owners.
Okay, you need to mute your computer.
You need to get off this computer Zoom.
Sorry, sorry.
Leave that meeting. Much better. Okay.
I think you need to do some... We need to do some homework before we go ahead and propose this. And that's what exactly are we gonna ask them to do? And what's the basis for it? And what outcomes are we likely to have? Because to me, this looks... It's just short of telling them to do it.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, perfect. So Elliot, that's the intent of the the suggestion that... And the reason that I voted it for regional is that regional staff will do the research and then make a list of recommendations. And I can give you an example of one that we're talking about with electric vehicles. And that is the recommendation is to fit houses with an electric outlet that allows people to automatically have a Type 2 charging station. Now, we can't demand that, but if we have... And we're working on this in a separate guide. If at the municipal level... I'm sorry, at the regional level, that we have a code or we have a recommendation that says... A recommendation for how a house is wired, that that, while not in code, would go along with the supplement, I guess, to code. So, but the staff would work on that and then make that come together. And I apologize, because I can't even get other stuff up on my computer.
That all sounds reasonable, although one thing I think we'd also need to add is encourage people to have generators, because there are power failures in the region, sometimes lasting days.
Yes.
And the tools we're suggesting here won't solve that problem. Whereas if you have a generator that would generate electricity, so you could actually charge your vehicle, then individuals can solve that problem. And maybe it's...
But we're... Yeah, what... Yeah, okay, I guess they're not addressing that right here, but... Yeah, I'll just... I've gotta get more set up on my end, but I apologize. Now that I'm like this.
Okay, so it sounds like...
I'll just leave my vote... I'll leave my vote as...
Regional?
Regional, yeah.
Okay, so number two is regional. Okay. Number three. Promote programs, provide tools, and encourage strategies that reduce energy efficiency barriers in rent-lease properties.
I'd put down regional for that one, too.
It's okay.
Pam?
Yeah, I had... I'm saying what I had, but after reviewing it, I had municipal, regional, and federal. But I can go with regional.
Suton?
Regional.
Regional. Betsy?
Regional.
Okay.
And can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Perfect, great. Thank you.
Okay. Next item. Advocate at the state and federal level for stronger and cleaner energy codes.
I had put other. I know some people put regional, but I thought this should be a advocacy organization. because the, the advocacy organization would be more prepared to, you know, to interact with state and federal, um, agencies. Because I don't think the municipal, at the municipal level, we can, or even the regional meaning like council of governments, uh, we're really prepared, we don't have the staff resources to, to be an advocacy, uh, organization.
I agree. Because there have been other things where people have suggested we propose such and such to the state, and we always have a controversy or difficulty getting those done. And this might be a much more important thing to do, but I don't think, I agree with you that we're not equipped to do that.
Pam?
I agree, we're not equipped, but to cut the middleman out, go straight to the state and federal, because they have the, the resources to move, to move on this more quickly than us nitpicking, um, not nitpicking, but using advocacy of other agencies. But I can go with you, Dan, on that, on other.
Sutan?
Other.
Betsy?
Other.
Okay, and I made a note about going straight to the state or federal level. Okay, next. Support building energy code compliance.
I think both municipal and regional can, certainly regional, because our code, center region code administration is a regional code, uh, agency. But municipalities can weigh in on helping to, in terms of our own reviews of development plans, you know, the planning commission and the board of supervisors, we can certainly continue to promote energy code compliance. So I'd say municipal and regional.
Okay, Elliot?
I think if we have regulations in place, then that's the law. It's sort of like when we say that a person has to have their car off the street if there's two inches of snow. We don't wait till there's three inches and say, oh, it'd be a nice idea if you moved your car. Uh, it's either an ordinance or it isn't. And so I think there are a number of things that, if we find that they're, they're useful and they, they save energy or promote, um, clean energy, yes, we can codify these, and then they'll, they'll be law. And if we, I don't know if we then advocate their enforcement, we've already done so by enacting them into law.
Pam?
I had both, municipal and regional.
Sutan?
Both.
Betsy?
Municipal and regional.
All right, next item. Advance policies for building designs that perform better than code requirements for energy efficiency, electrification, and renewable energy.
I think it's other, just for the same rationale that I expressed for item number one. Advocacy group, I think is better prepared and has, have the resources to be, uh, to do this, as opposed to, you know, a regional or, or a municipal level staff.
Okay, Elliot?
I agree with Dan.
Pam?
Dan, I had, I'm gonna say what I had is municipal, regional, state, federal, and housing advocates and organizations. I also put as a new educating communication and transparency of understanding the vital needs are imperative, but I can put other down for this.
Sutan?
Other.
Betsy?
And I said regional and other, my rationale for regional is, um, in, in various activities that Pam, uh, does during her job, she is well aware of certain, um, suggestions that would improve, uh, building efficiency, and she might even have a list, and that might be somehow incorporated into the cap, and she may, um, advocate certainly one-on-one at, um, at conferences, so at the state level.
So are we okay with other? That was the consensus.
I'm okay with other.
Okay.
Just so noted.
Okay. Uh, next. Support partners in developing an affordable housing plan, Dan.
I put municipal, but I, I think it could be a combination municipal and regional, certainly with, with our regional planning office can be very helpful to the municipalities. But the, and bottom line is that each municipality is the one who's going to decide on ordinances regarding any changes to, uh, you know, zoning classifications that would permit, uh, more affordable housing to be developed in our municipality. So bottom line, municipality has, is the one to implement it, but the regional planning office can be a good resource to help.
I agree with that. That's the problem with a lot of this, for example, going back to the one, for example, where promoting things that are better than, than the codes say. I'd rather work on changing the codes if we get a good idea.
Sure.
Bring all the good ideas in, and then let's suggest changing the codes. But just to say, it sounds like insubordination if you only want to favor things that aren't code yet without giving away to actually make them codes. Maybe I'm being extreme on this, but I, there's no, none of the choices here is, like, don't do it until we have more information, or don't do it. There are ways of doing it, I don't know what they all are, but this assumes that, yes, we're gonna do all 92 of these things, and we're just saying, who's gonna do it? I don't buy that.
Pam?
I originally had municipal, regional, state, and federal, and housing advocates and organizations, um, but I can go with, um, both municipal and regional.
Okay. Sutan?
I agree with Elliot.
Betsy?
Uh, regional and municipal.
Okay, so we'll go with municipal and regional for that one. Educate about and address urban heat island effects.
I have a question, maybe Betsy can answer it. What is the urban heat island? What are we, what are we talking about here?
Uh, we're, we're talking about, um, a relative difference in outside temperature based on, um, let's see, um, radiation off of, say, black pavement, and will raise the temperature in an urban area. The heat effects, and it has to do with, um, air conditioning's going and giving off, um, you know, giving off heat as they cool the inside, um, just more, yeah, more surfaces that absorb and then re, um, uh, return heat to the environment. So on average, a municipal area could be, urban area could be, you know, five degrees hotter than a, um, you know, place in the suburbs with trees. And we, my husband and I experienced that regularly when we went to Philadelphia for an event and then drove home when we used to live in the Philadelphia area, and we had a thermometer on our car, and we could see the difference. It's quite dramatic, five or six degrees, so makes a difference.
Okay, that's...
Is that the question, Dan?
Yes, it does, it's common sense, but then, how does it, what are we talking about in terms of this climate action adaptation plan? So, so educate, we're telling people what it is, but what's, what are we gonna do about it?
Yes, so ways, ways to reduce it. Yeah, so one way to reduce it is planting trees, okay? Another way to reduce it is to have, uh, have houses, um, a different, the roofs be a different color or different material. I'm not saying that, again, we don't, we're not mandating that, but there are ways out there that can reduce, um, you know, heat in the surrounding area by, um, yeah, if you have shade trees that are going to shade the area, um, you know, maybe putting up awnings, um, in fact, Pam's, um...
Okay.
Never mind, sorry.
All right, I understand in terms of educating people and ways to mitigate that, but this really only applies to an urban area, so, uh...
Well, that's take...
Yeah, we're talking about...
But we are having, uh, we have some urban areas, and we may have more urban areas as we develop. I'm just, I'm looking at, um, measuring heat, and I'm just looking at some stuff. So parking lots are a big thing, um, so maybe covering parking lots, or painting them a different cover, color, or, uh, what are the impact climate change and heat islands?
Those kind of things make sense, uh, and in Chicago, they, part of their plan is to have their buildings a different color, uh, so that it radiates heat to space rather than helping to absorb it and trap it. Those are great. But when we say that air conditioning is at fault, uh, so what's the answer to that? Turn off your air conditioner when it gets hottest? I don't think that's gonna be a very popular thing.
Okay.
Well, all, I'm not saying that we're going to recommend, okay, cool roofs, green roofs, trees and vegetation, um, trees and vegetation, I'm just trying to read, um, so this is, uh, yeah, pretty, and there's a lot of, apparently there are incentives and rebates for that. I've got another website. Cool pavements, there might be a material that, um, you know, going forward that, that people could use that would be cooler. So all this, um, I'm just trying to go back and forth. All we're asking people, or this item is asking people to do, is asking us to do whether that information should come from us as a municipality, or should it come from a region, or should it come from other? And, yeah, I recommend that it come from regional, um, because these are things that actually individual homeowners could do, so that we have that information on our website. Um, you know, homeowner may say, how do I reduce greenhouse gas in my, um, house? Well, I'm gonna plant more trees, I'm gonna put certain shades in on my windows so I don't need to use my air conditioner, I'm gonna coat my driveway with a certain coating that's more reflective and reduces heat, uh, I'm gonna put a car, a carport with a certain color roof so that my car can go, whatever, there's, there's many different things out there. So, but I'm just saying, rather than us do that, or if we have the information from regional, it's something that we could put on our website. But right now, regional has a website, it's called Center Sustains, or I think they're changing the name of it in a moment. And so a lot of people will go to, a lot of people who are looking to reduce their, their own carbon footprint will go to that website, figure out what they can do in their particular home, right? And even though we live in the suburbs, um, you know, any human activity is gonna create a, add to that heat island. Um, and certainly it would be, would happen in any, um, uh, major building up and down north Atherton, and if somebody were, were to ask for a, um, a variance in zoning, or a zoning overlay, for example, we might say, sure, the same way we did for Patton Crossing, I want to have 75% native plant, we would say, we want to have all of the, the roofs of certain color, or green roofs, yada, yada, so.
Sutan, you have your hand up.
Sutan, Sutan, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I don't, so I'm, I'm trying to be mindful of time, I know we're, we have a long way to go, and we're already like 30-plus minutes into this. And, and just so, for clarity, I guess the, the question, us doing this activity isn't about us agreeing with everything, correct, or endorsing everything, it's really about who we think should lead whatever this effort is. Am I correct?
Yes.
Exactly, exactly.
And so at the end of the day, whether or not we agree with something, if we say it should be bounded in whatever level, ultimately, if then this recommendation comes in at that particular level, if it's at the municipality level, for example, we can then just get more detail and say whether or not we support this thing or not. So this stuff is not...
Exactly.
Really, it's just who needs to be leading the efforts.
Right, and whether we want to have it in our CIP, exactly. So it could be a regional suggestion, but it could be, uh, applied variably by different municipalities.
Okay.
So right, so right now, we're determining if we say regional, whatever level, we're determining that it's gonna be in the CIP? Or are we saying, at this point, we can say we don't want it in the CIP?
We're gonna discuss...
No, this...
Sorry, Betsy, we're gonna...
CIP at a different time, yes, okay.
Yeah, we'll discuss that next week, the CIP.
So, so really, okay, I, Sutan, what I hear you saying, and maybe I'm wrong about this, is that we're not saying whether or not we should do the particular thing, but if it's decided that we're going to try to do this kind of thing, who should take the lead and who should be involved in doing it?
Yep.
Yeah, and not that I'm trying to shut down conversation about it, but it's like, if we're gonna put details at a later time, then I prefer that, so we can make sure we get through all of it.
And if, if I could jump in, thank you for emphasizing that, yes, Elliot, we are not saying that we are gonna do this, we are not saying that we as a municipality are gonna do it, or that we as a region are gonna do it, but if it is done at all, is it gonna be done at the municipal level? Okay?
But I think that's, I think this one could be done at the federal level.
This could be an other.
Okay, fine, I think it should be done at the regional level. So we just can each vote, but we don't have to say whether it's gonna work or not.
Right.
It's just whether we are going to address it, if we decide, if we vote in the CIP to address it, whether it should be done. So we're just voting on the locus of the action right now.
Got it.
Okay, so what are we, regional on this one?
Regional, I'm, I'm voting regional.
Elliot?
And I, I say regional.
Sutan?
Since everyone else is saying regional, I'll say regional.
Okay. Okay, next item. Designate an energy coordinator.
I can jump in and just say, um, that I recommend that be municipal, um, and we can have a conversation offline about whether that be somebody probably already existing on staff, um, whether it be at, you know, a monthly meeting where a couple of people come in and decide to work coordinatingly as energy managers, that's sort of having a point person. So I, I vote municipal.
Well, it's by definition, look at the title of this group, maximize efficiency of municipal facilities. So basically, all three of them are municipal, for, are asking for municipal action, so seems to me all three of them ought to be municipal.
Do we agree with that?
Just by definition.
If we define it that way.
Do we agree with municipal for all three of these?
I do.
Elliot?
That's okay, except when I hear about a, a regional energy direct, an energy director, I put them right in the midst of the, uh, regional planning commission, or the county planning commission.
And that's a, yeah, that's a conversation I think you can have when you look at this again.
That's, that's the problem with what we're doing, though. We, I think we, everyone's gonna do this a little differently, but I, but, I mean, I don't know what to do. I, I just, I just don't think we, we high, I don't think that we appoint a, an energy manager, uh, and that there are five, five or six of them in the region, when we don't even, we don't do that with planning or any, just about anything else.
Sutan?
I, I would, I would say, um, this would be a regional thing for me.
Do you want to say regional slash municipal for this one?
I mean, sure, I mean, looking down the road, though, it is like, this needs to be a regional effort, and if, I'm thinking, is COG municipal or regional? Like, when we say what COG does, are we grouping that as regional or municipal?
COG would be regional.
Yeah.
Okay, and so I would think honestly, if they're... Okay, and so I think honestly, if there was an energy coordinator that we did have, it would probably, in my opinion, be in the COG sort of like sphere and sort of like coordinating with all the different municipalities, and so that's why I said.
So I know we're trying to get through this, I just want to say, we actually do have essentially an energy coordinator right now at the regional level, and it's Pam Adams, obviously, and the idea was that she would have a direct line of communication to somebody who had, was the energy lens, and in our case, it would probably just be Amy, it would be the manager. Some larger municipalities may have somebody who really has a thing about energy, and they would be the energy point person or whatever, so.
Okay, so we want to say regional for this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next one, establish an energy management plan for public facilities that includes energy audits, benchmarking, and renewable energy.
I think that should be part of the facilities committee of COG.
Regional.
Regional.
I say regional, that's Betsy.
Does everyone else agree with regional?
Yes.
Okay. Consider an ordinance for all new municipal buildings to meet high-performance building standards such as LEED certification, Energy Star, or net zero energy-ready standard.
That has to be municipal because municipalities are the only ones who can pass an ordinance like this.
Okay. We all agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, next one, complete regional community resiliency-building workshops that engage stakeholders and the public to strengthen preparedness and readiness.
I can jump in, if that's all right, if I can't say anything, sorry, I'm going to just be rude. I'd say regional, something that would be planned at the COG level, a workshop, and then municipalities could attend as is their want.
Do we agree with regional?
Might be their want.
Yeah, regional.
Okay, regional. All right, next one, set performance goals for vital social functions, healthcare, education, and public safety, and supporting buildings and infrastructure systems.
I vote regional.
Do we agree on regional, everyone?
Yeah, regional.
Yeah.
If we do this, regional.
Okay.
I wouldn't do it, though.
Integrate resiliency goals into community comprehensive land use hazard mitigation, economic, and other development plans.
Well, I'd say both municipal and regional, because some, some of these would be, municipalities would implement, and others, the COG could interimplement.
Are we good with municipal and regional?
It's good.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
All right, next one, increase onsite renewable energy systems and electrification.
I'd say regional and municipal.
Do we all agree with Betsy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Somewhere where we talk about increasing electrification, we should have something in here so that nobody forgets what happens in a power failure.
Yes.
We need to plan for that.
Yeah. Implement recommendations to achieve sole smart silver or gold certification.
I'd say regional and municipal.
We all good with that?
Yep.
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Explore municipal resiliency and integration of battery and microgrid technologies for weather-resistant operations.
There's your thing, Elliot.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say regional and municipal.
But it has to be somebody that's knowledgeable, doesn't it?
Should be an F.
This is, yeah, and so we either hire a consultant, if we decided to do it at municipal level or the regional level, they might hire a consultant, so it's not how it's done, it's who would do it, who would take the lead on that.
So are we good with regional and municipal for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Partner with utilities and stakeholders to maintain a high degree of reliability during extreme weather events. I feel like that's an other.
I mean, it would be all three, honestly.
Yes, all three.
Yes. Okay. Next one, provide education and outreach to expand participation to cleaner energy sources.
I'd, I'd say that's other.
Are you okay with other?
Yeah.
Uh, next one, partner on a region-wide solar strategy to.
Excuse me, what, but Pam and her role would be perfect in helping to do that.
Yeah, I think she would work with the outside stakeholders, so.
Yeah.
Um, okay, partner on a region-wide solar strategy to expand solar, especially to low and moderate income households.
I'd say that's regional.
Everyone good with regional?
Yeah.
That would need to be other, too.
Yeah.
Regional, other?
Yeah, yeah, like the Center County Housing and Land Trust would be the other.
What are the pros and cons of listing the groups that are targeted? Because I think everybody should be participating in something like this.
Yeah, you could do that.
Of what, listing that?
I think that's what it says, especially to low and moderate income households, so it's global, but.
Mm-huh.
Particular interest.
Okay. Uh, next one, encourage community involvement to explore opportunities to reduce installation costs for residents and small organizations.
Just to back up right quick, I think, Elliot, to your point, I think it's, the assumption is that higher-income owners, I don't know the research on this, but they would, people who are higher class would probably have the monies to actually be installing solar and stuff like that, and so I think saying especially to low and moderate income is emphasizing that more advocacy or resources may need to be provided to include them into that.
And that makes sense, but I think we should make it easiest for the people that have the most difficulty in achieving it.
Yep.
Right.
Mm-huh.
Okay. Encourage community involvement to explore opportunities to reduce installation costs for residents and small organizations. Do we just do that's regional, other, again?
Yeah, that, well, I, I would even say municipal, encourage community involvement to explore, so, um.
All three.
Yeah, I think.
So all?
I can see that it could happen at the municipal level, not all things.
Okay. Look for opportunities to engage the agricultural community in renewable energy projects such as solar, solar grazing, and biomass energy.
I would say other, and you could also be looking at COG and county organizations like agricultural organizations, USDA, mostly other.
It could also be advocated in our educational institutions.
Mm-hmm.
Like Ag progress day would be a good place for them to be talking about this kind of thing for farms.
Okay.
Yeah, so definitely for other, yeah.
Okay. Advocate for statewide standards to ensure energy, support for energy efficiency and renewable energy.
Let's do it. Certainly other, that would be statewide advocacy group.
Other could be like a PSAT or a PML.
Is it, is it other, or is it everyone?
It would be everyone, because if we'd have to like sign on, for example, to letters, create, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it could be regional, for example, if we, we, some of the staff is trying to leverage support through, like, say, PML or PSAT, you know, because we do actually have an opportunity to direct the legislative activity at PML and PSAT.
Okay.
Not that that makes, our vote makes much of a difference.
So we'll note that's everyone and maybe note some of these advocacy groups.
Yeah, sounds good.
Develop models and toolkits for zoning and development of renewable energy sources.
Other, I think the other, need to take the lead, and they can transmit that down to, you know, the regional municipality, but I wouldn't want us.
Yeah.
Involved in the development and all that, that's a lot of effort.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I'd say regional because Pam is actually already doing that, so that's, we've had interns that work on that, so.
So do we want to do other slash regional?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, explore countywide incentives for clean energy development.
I'd, I'd say regional and other, and again, if it's countywide, it would be, you know, the commissioners, but they would probably work with local bodies like COG.
Any of these things that are regional, somebody will have to figure out whether home rule govern places or second-class townships or whatever can make, is eligible to make these regulations.
Yes.
And so, I think it should be done, but we need to, you can't advocate somebody do this if they're not allowed to.
Right.
Mm-huh.
Okay. Promote solar panel recycling and advocate for federal and state-level mandates for recycling.
Other.
Mm-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say other.
All right, we're on to transportation. Create regional strategy to expand electric vehicle fleets and charging infrastructure.
Yay! I'd say regional, if it says create a regional strategy.
You okay with regional? Community outreach on purchasing clean vehicles, including incentives.
Yeah, regional and others.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Me, too.
Examine strategies for shared mobility and shared micro-mobility.
That's a good idea.
I'd say regional, yeah, regional.
I mean, it would be municipal, too, just under.
Yeah, they'd work with municipal.
I would say both.
So regional and municipal?
I think you're right, Pam.
Mm-huh.
Reduce emissions footprint for municipal vehicles, I think that one would be municipal.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And regional if you're considering, like, COG vehicles.
Okay, municipal and regional, okay. Implement recommendations to achieve gold level of certification as a bicycle-friendly community.
Ooh!
I think this is regional because the COG did the last certification we got.
But I, did that, I thought the Borough did.
No, I think Trish Meek.
I think the Borough.
Trish Meek when she.
Trish did approve.
For COG, for the rest of us, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it could be regional and municipal.
Yeah, I think so, because, yeah, I would say municipal and regional, because we could, or, you know, the Borough could go off on its own and like try to get a platinum rating while we would have maybe still a, you know, silver rating or something like that.
I think it actually could be easier for us to get a platinum one than the Borough because, for example, the regulation about allow four feet from, from bicycles to all vehicles, they have to widen every street in town for that to work.
Mm-huh.
Okay, so we'll put regional, municipal for that. Collaborate with CADA to increase public transit access and use. I mean, I would say this would be regional because you're working with CADA.
Right.
Yeah, I'd say regional.
I'd say both.
You say regional and municipal, Pam?
Yeah.
Okay. Establish employer partnerships to incentivize and support sustainable commuting and telework options.
I would consider that regional, mostly because a lot of the commuting is done into the borough area, they, you know, from the suburban municipalities to the urban municipalities.
And I think that's also an opportunity for CADA as well.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
So I also put down, not only for the employer, but for the employee as well, to incentivize both, because of morale over there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it depends on the occupation, there's some occupations that can't really be done remotely, like emergency, medical, police.
Police, public works, yep. Improve walking infrastructure, I noted that this is one where a patent township could almost be a leader in the region because of our commitment to share use paths and bicycle pedestrian facilities.
Mm-huh, yeah. I, I see that as happening at the municipal level.
I would put both.
Could be coordinated regionally, but really, you know, we're the ones that.
Regional and.
Pay for.
So we'll do regional and municipal for that one?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. Support projects that increase the safety of multiple modes of transportation.
All levels.
Yeah, that's everybody.
Yeah.
Mm-huh, yeah.
Okay. Increase compact and contiguous development.
I don't.
So right, oh, sorry.
Contiguous, what's that?
So the developments would all be connected in some way, so you could walk amongst.
Touching, yeah.
Yeah, that's a municipal implementation item.
Yeah, I agree.
So could we put both regional and municipal and regional?
We, yeah, we certainly do through the municipal growth boundary.
Yeah.
And the sewer service area, that's something that we act on regionally, I guess.
Okay.
Are we both at municipal, whatever?
One thing I'm thinking of here is, there are a lot of places where you have a building or a business on one particular plot, and there's no way to, to connect with the neighbors. You have to go out of that whole thing and then come back in at another entrance, whereas some places are interconnected. But do we regulate that?
Well, and years ago, like many years ago in the seventies, there was a regional ordinance to require interconnection of local streets because of emergency management concerns, but you have to discourage through traffic. So that's an example of this, this would be a regional municipal function, it was a regional ordinance that went to municipal.
Regional and municipal?
Yeah, I think that's what we're hearing.
Mm-huh.
Prioritize multimodal development through investment incentives and regulation.
I'd say regional and municipal.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Align parking options and infrastructure for bikes and electric vehicles with climate goals.
That's definitely a municipal implementation plan.
Mm-huh. Yeah.
Okay. Identify transportation programs and projects that reduce surface runoff and protect water resources. Okay.
I agree with that.
I think also, one of the things we should advocate is changing of state regulations on what like hundred-year floods are, if they're, if they're becoming more common, the engineering standards should meet that, or should be changed to accommodate that.
Okay.
So there are different scales of doing something.
Right. Coordinate with stakeholders to improve real-time monitoring of flooding, traffic, and traffic operations. Coordinate with stakeholders to improve real-time monitoring of flooding, traffic, and traffic operations. I feel like that's an other.
I, we're thinking of it as regional and municipal, so coordinate with stakeholders to improve the monitoring of flooding.
Yep.
The traffic side of it though would be PennDOT. But, I mean, that coordination.
Pardon me?
The traffic side would be PennDOT, you know, we're doing that coordination project with PennDOT for all the signals from Patton Township through to Harris Township on Atherton Street, so that would be an example of being able to improve real-time monitoring.
Well, the municipal stuff though too, wouldn't that be like the tall trees with like Game Day and the other stuff out there that were monitoring traffic and stuff? So it would be municipal?
Yeah, that's why I think it might be everybody.
So can we put municipal, regional, and the other, and that would cover everybody and other?
Because some of that monitoring is done by satellite.
Yep.
Yeah, because I noted educating community of the impact while working with stakeholders on real-time monitoring of flooding, traffic, and traffic operations. So that's why I put it like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Implement recommendations in the Center County Long Range Transportation Plan.
And most of those recommendations are regional. Regional and other, I guess.
So we.
I think you're right, Betsy.
Regional and.
Yeah.
Regional and other.
Yeah.
Advocate for Pennsylvania to participate in the transportation and climate initiative of the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic states.
Everyone. What's other?
Other, probably. I mean, we might as a municipality write a letter of support if we were asked, but it's not like something we spend time seeking and participating in, but yeah.
Okay. We're on to solid waste. Implement education campaign for waste reduction strategies. That's, I think, regional.
Yeah.
And develop guidelines, education, and resources to shape the procurement policies of municipal and commercial sectors.
I'd put both.
Both.
Other, both?
Or regional, yeah.
So municipal and regional? Incentivize businesses to pursue strategies that minimize their waste. There is actually a program, I don't know if it's still there, but it was years ago, the Waste Watcher Program, they would award businesses that did green business-type activities, and the county has a green business program.
So is that regional and.
So regional and other?
Yeah, I think regional.
Regional, yeah.
So they could hang a sign on the window of like, we're a green place, or?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Develop systems and infrastructure that promote and institutionalize reusable goods.
Yeah, right now that's certainly done regionally.
Regional?
Mm-hmm.
Can also be at the micro level, at the Village of Penn State, a place where I didn't expect to hear a long conversation about this, somebody spent a half an hour talking about recycling, and for example, if you have a can, a can of dog food, don't wash it out, you're going to waste water. And so, you should just put that in for recycling. And so, that's not municipal, it's like individual type thing.
It's like Joan Duchard, right?
Yes, that's right. She wasn't, she wasn't, she wasn't the one in this case who suggested it, but.
I've seen her do that.
Oh, yeah.
She's amazing, but yeah.
Well, we think about the municipal though, that's really us leading that charge for these things. I don't think we should be leading that type of education.
No, I agree, yeah.
So regional and municipal for that one?
No, I just think.
Well, I'd say regional and other.
Regional and other, okay.
Regional and other.
All right. Municipal government and government entities lead in becoming low-waste generators.
I think that's municipal, I mean, yeah, municipal and regional, there's already some regional efforts with the organic waste collection, that's at the regional level, but.
So municipal and regional. Develop programs and policy to increase recycling at commercial locations and multifamily properties. I will say that's already ongoing within the center region with the Center County Recycling Association, so I'd put that as a regional municipal one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Increase recycling during construction and demolition projects.
I'd say that's regional, to come up with a list of options, you know, to present to demolition workers.
I would almost say that's other, because absent a statewide regulation, you're not going to find many people that are going to recycle during construction and demolition projects. So that's where advocacy at the DEP level would be important.
Mm-hmm, and you have a background in waste management, right, Amy?
I do, I worked for the recycling.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So we put all the.
On the one we had just before.
I'll go with that, yeah.
On the one we had just before where it was the thing that we're already doing, we should somehow make a note of the fact that that's the case, so that people don't read it and think, well, we're opposed to the idea just because we're not pushing it now, or the reason we're not pushing it now is because it's being done.
Yep, I'll make a note, that's being done at the county level. Reduce organics going to the landfill, this is one that, I will tell you, they updated the state waste composition study a couple of years ago to help them sort garbage, and our organics is still really, really high, and that is one where DEP needs to step in and do some, the state needs to do some regulation on that side. They need to consider banning organics from landfills.
So, what's your recommendation on this?
I would recommend other, and it would be at the state level.
Yeah, and I would actually say the regional, because of what we are at least trying to do right now, it's being implemented, we may get regulations from the state, but what they're trying to do right now with the organic drop-off point, you know, in each of the municipalities, is something that's initiated and monitored and carried through by the regional.
So put regional and.
That Shelley, yeah, Shelley made a.
Sounds good.
Okay. Support refus.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Betsy.
Yeah, sorry.
Support refuse and recycling trucks continuing to increase fuel efficiency and reduce their carbon fuel sources.
So.
Regional.
Yeah, so I'd say that is a regional, yeah.
Okay. Identify intersectional opportunities between solid waste, food production, and energy. I feel like that's an other.
Yeah, and I would say regional and other, definitely intersectional opportunities, so how would the other intersect with our transportation, our regional system?
Strive towards bi-weekly garbage collection, I would say that's regional.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we want to advocate for that?
Well, I think that's a discussion that's probably going to be had during this consultant that they hired for the contract, to redo the trash contract. Partner with nonprofit organizations to promote the purchase of local food and projects, products, sorry.
I'd say that's other, maybe initiated by COG, but.
Municipal and regional?
Yeah, could we put all three, municipal, regional, and other, that covers everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Expand community gardens and access to healthy local food.
Yay, municipal.
I was waiting for you to say that, Betsy. Do we want to do municipal and regional, or just municipal?
Either one.
I'd say municipal, I'd say regional too, because.
Okay. Consider policies to encourage institutional purchasing of food, local and climate-friendly foods throughout the region.
I'd put regional.
Regional?
Yeah, regional and other.
Regional and other.
Okay. Courage development of food and organic industries relocating to the region to expand opportunities for increased energy production.
So is this like biomass-type stuff?
I don't know.
Yeah, biomass, food, organic industry, okay.
I put regional, I put municipal, regional, and other, and encourage partnership with local farmers to expand development of food and organic industry to reload to the center region.
That sounds good.
I don't see that being done at the municipal level, but I, just because we don't interact with farmers or, and we don't even interact with like Wegmans, I mean, could, I guess we could.
Well, could we?
Yeah, we could.
I mean, it's a start.
Okay.
To encourage, you know, to more or less, we're trying to promote working together and partnerships.
And our neighboring township, Ferguson, has a whole area that's agricultural.
Yep.
So they might have a different answer than we would, we wouldn't want to fight over it.
So we'll do regional, municipal, and other for that one? Okay, moving right along here, land management. Develop a regional policy strengthening the preservation of ag and forested properties.
I'd say that's all. I mean, we can, yeah, we certainly have done our bit in Patton, regional policies. Yeah, that we would be contributing to that when it came to.
One of the things that is involved there is, you know, when somebody clear-cuts a whole lot, it's because they're allowed to.
Yeah.
By the state.
Okay.
Every zone can be a forest.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll put everybody for that one. Review and update ordinances to allow for and promote native plannings and no-mow, low-mow areas.
No-mow maize back again.
I'm not voting for it, I'll tell you, I've read some stuff about it. You guys made me do my research, but yes, it would be, I would say municipal.
If you can get rid of the ticks, fine, but.
All right, so municipal for that one.
I would even say regional too, but yeah.
I would say both, because we need an educational piece on native plants in our area. I know we have a few of our board members who are the experts, but the rest of us.
We have one who's a real expert on.
You know, just educating our community on what's going on in development, so.
Okay, municipal and regional.
Yeah.
All right. With community partners, provide education programs to empower homeowners, landscapers, and businesses to follow sustainable landscaping best practices. I think that follows what you just said, Pam. So, municipal and regional for that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Support local agricultural entities to develop and implement education and outreach programs about carbon farming practices that will enhance carbon sequestration, increase oil health, climate resilience, and crop productivity.
Other.
Other.
Yeah, I'd say other, yeah.
Engage technical assistance and support through cooperative extension, NGOs, state and local government, federal agencies, and other programs, I think that's an other.
I have a question about the use of other for the previous one. If an organization wanted to come in and talk to us about the pros and cons of doing that kind of thing, wouldn't this be a great platform to do it? I mean, we don't necessarily want longer meetings, but that'd be a great way for people to get the information out.
Yeah, we could do other municipal for that one.
They would be taking the lead on it, though.
Yeah.
I mean, anyone could come in and talk to us, but it's real nobody's going to take the lead on all this stuff, and I think, yeah, the other.
Okay.
Okay. Advocate for sustainable funding mechanisms to support best management practices, I feel like that's an other.
Yeah, definitely another.
Other.
Okay. Local government entities adopt a sustainable landscaping standard, reduce water and chemical consumption and transition to electrically sound landscaping equipment.
Regional.
I would say regional and municipal.
Regional and municipal?
So local, it's local government to develop a sustainable standard, and I'm thinking, you know, we could influence it by doing, do by, show by doing, whatever, what we do.
Okay.
So that'd be like setting an example of not setting a regulation for, you don't want to have. You don't want to have Lowe's and Home Depot arguing about whether they're have to or should have certain products there.
Right.
Yeah.
Promote and educate businesses and residents about benefits of electric landscaping equipment. I feel like that might also be municipal and regional.
Yeah, but.
Don't shortcut that one.
Okay. Evaluate including low-impact development standards in the zoning ordinance. I think that's probably municipal.
Municipal and regional, yeah.
Okay. Analyze farmland and parkland to identify disadvantaged cropland or land that could be more productive for other uses, such as perennial cropping, solar installations, repairing buffers, et cetera.
I'd put both.
I didn't say all, I think, no. Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily be analyzing farmland, but some people might, some municipal.
Put everybody?
Yeah.
On the low impact, you want to be careful what you ask for, because somebody might come in and say, I don't want to put a sidewalk in this residential area, because that's, there's more impact than if I just leave it as all dirt and let the kids ride their little bikes through mud and stuff like that, we don't need sidewalks. I don't know, maybe I'm overstretching that, but.
People who want to say nay, they're going to say nay.
Okay.
We want to give them more reason to say yes.
Create policies that guide regional development and planning considering the region's climate vulnerabilities.
I'd put both, or we can put all.
So municipal, regional, or do you want to do everybody?
What do you think?
Yeah, I think you'd have to be working with other organizations outside of COG.
Okay.
Okay, we're on to the last page. Clean and healthy water. Identify and protect high-priority conservation lands to manage flooding and protect groundwater recharge zones, I will say a lot of this work is happening already because of our pollution reduction plan that we're a part of with the MS4 program.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and a lot of it's happening in the hot track oversight.
So I'd say municipal and regional for this.
Yeah. And other, maybe with clear water, working on that.
Okay. Use green infrastructure to better manage impacts of stormwater. I would say this.
Amy, is that something that would be, that we could, is it, that's, the stormwater regulations, are those state-dictated?
So, we all have local stormwater regulations. So we all have local stormwater regulations, but the state has mandated us to do a regional pollution reduction plan, so I would say this is municipal and regional.
Okay.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha. Okay, so, yeah. And so we have some leeway to, we can over, we have to meet the minimum, but we could, you know, even make it more climate-friendly if we got their permission, whatever.
We also need, we also need to self-educate so that all the people on different boards are sensitive to this as different issues come up.
Yep, definitely.
Which is, yeah, one of the reasons why we want to do this with individual, all the individuals in municipalities, so, yeah, it is like a group education effort, you know.
Incentivize implementation of green infrastructure on private property.
Other.
Other.
Others, definitely.
Identify road access issues related to flooding, electrical distribution, energy systems, and emergency management. I would say that's probably municipal.
And other.
Yeah, and regional.
Identify vulnerable populations and strengthen communications outreach.
All.
Develop a center-region tree strategy for public properties and the community. And I will say there's a lot of work on these items that are ongoing right now at the regional level, so these should all probably be regional.
Uh huh, uh huh. Yeah, yeah. And I'd say regional.
Update, develop a municipal street tree guide and landscape design standards for new development for tree species appropriate for a future local climate. And this is something that's going on right now with all the municipalities. They're working on a standard tree list that we could all adopt in our ordinances that would be all native trees to our area.
So we do both?
Yeah.
Be municipal and regional. I know that's going to make you happy, Betsy.
Betsy's been pining for that for a long time.
Update and/or consider a tree preservation ordinance. That would be municipal.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
What does that mean? You can't chop down a diseased tree?
It means that if you have a property that has trees of a certain size, you're not supposed to remove those trees. You have to preserve them, and if you have to remove them for some reason, you usually have to replace them with an equal number of trees.
Okay, these things should be defined as what we mean.
Yes. Yeah, and some of them, some of us have this within our zoning already. We might have it in the I-99 corridor because some of the corridor really regulations require tree preservation.
Oh, that's cool. I didn't know.
That's something we can look into. I don't know if it's in there, but it might be.
So would that be both, then?
I would think it would be municipal.
Okay.
Uh huh, yeah. Because it's, if it's an ordinance, it would be municipal, yeah. We're the only ones who can do ordinances.
All right. Identify opportunities for rainwater collection systems, repairing buffers, and water reuse at existing and new public facilities and properties. I would say that's municipal and regional.
Yeah, ditto.
And make sure that the places where we collect the water don't become mosquito-breeding places.
Yep. Evaluate incentives for practices that reduce the use of potable water for non-potable purposes and/or recharge groundwater.
Regional.
Regional?
I guess it's regional. I'd want to know more about that because that sounds like putting potentially disease-causing water in closer reach to people than may be necessary. But I don't know that that's right.
Well, I think they classify the beneficial reuse water as non-potable, and I think that's probably something because like the, they've expanded the use of beneficial reuse water, the Kissinger Meadows, and some of the businesses in town are using it for.
But you listen to our UAJA director, and he says that water is more pure than a lot of the other water.
I watched Tom Kurtz, a former Patton Township manager, drink a glass of it when they opened the beneficial reuse plant.
Yeah, but definitely done at the regional level.
Okay, so we'll put regional for that one. Expand water conservation outreach and incentive programs for residents and businesses.
Regional, other?
Yes.
Yeah.
Homestretch. Support partners in identifying, restoring, and protecting critical habitats.
Well, we're doing that right now, municipal, and then also regional with, maybe other with the Burn Creek Watershed. I guess that's, that's regional. So it's done at a regional level.
Municipal, regional for that one?
Yeah.
Develop a pest management strategy, including education applies to trees, public health, and agriculture.
Regional.
And municipal, even.
Regional, municipal?
Regional developments, municipal apply.
All right, and last one. Promote native species plantings and preserve park spaces. I would say that's municipal.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine who could possibly have proposed that.
That was from the cat, Elliot. You think I have something to do with a cat? You're funny. Certainly municipal and probably regional, I would say.
Okay, municipal and regional. Okay, that's everything.
All right, Elliot.
Thank you for putting up with the difficulties with telecommunication. That was a great flinting at the beginning.
Is there any other business?
Sorry that I confused.
Is there a move to adjourn? Is there a second? Derek? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.